I am reconvening to open session, the regular meeting of the Fairview District 72 Board of Education. It is April 27, 2022, and I apologize, we're a little bit late, it's 7:05. But I would ask everyone, please, to silence their cell phones. Oh, I should mention that we have already established that we have a quorum. If you could, please, just silence your cell phones, and I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you. So first business this evening is to approve the minutes of the regular and closed session meetings of March 16, 2022. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Our second, are there any comments or edits to the minutes? We're all good? In that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The minutes are approved. Approved payment of the bills. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $144,567.55?
So moved. Second.
Okay, are there any questions regarding the bills? Hearing none. In that case, could the secretary please call a roll call vote?
It's Ms. Diakakis.
Yes.
Mr. Gulyana.
Yes.
Ms. Lenoi.
Yes.
I vote yes, Ms. Brown.
Yes. The bills are paid. So, PTA report, is there a representative for this? Oh, excellent.
Good evening. I'm Steven Larenas, one of the co-presidents. In the last month, the DEI Committee began publishing the Families of Fairview Newsletter Spotlight. We're hoping that families will fill out their form that could found in the newsletter, so that we can get to know more about some of the different families in the district. Parents were hard at work these last, this last month, preparing for this morning's support staff breakfast. We're glad we were able to celebrate all their hard work that they've done throughout the year. And also, at the same time, other parents have been working very hard to prepare for this Friday's teacher appreciation luncheon. Again, it's a small way for us to show how much we appreciate everything the teachers are doing. And also, those same parents are also preparing to show, continue to show our appreciation throughout Teacher Appreciation Week. Next Friday, we're looking forward to celebrating Multicultural Night. We'll be in the big gym from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then finally, our next, our next and final general PTA meeting of the year will be next Wednesday, or not next Wednesday, a couple Wednesdays, May 11, at 6:30, and it'll be in person. Once we know the location in the building, we'll announce that on the PTA newsletter. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So, school activity report. Does anybody from the board administration have good news to share from the district? I think we're looking at it, aren't we? Go ahead, anyone?
Mike, or you want to start us off?
We mentioned the amazing Penguin fundraiser for the African Penguins that are seventh grade students with Mrs. Che and our science department started. Kind of as an idea to try to provide for the organization to contribute funds, to have nests that are built. And we came in today just over $2,500, which will be over 75 nests, and will impact like, I think, close to 1,200 pairs of Penguins, which is amazing. So, kudos to all of that group and every one in the community, I mean, the amount of kids that came with like, their own money, and just said, oh, I'm just giving my, my own allowance or money from a birthday was absolutely incredible. And I think it moved teachers as well to see kids being so generous and families as well. And then we also, in the middle school, we placed first in the Niles Township feeder math competition. So that was very exciting. At Niles West, we had a group of students that went there and competed and did an amazing job, and came away in first place. So they were really excited about that. We're wrapping up our final spring seasons next week with tournaments a week from Saturday. So then that will be our athletic seasons for the Squeers. So more to follow probably in the May, May board meeting. So thank you.
We, last week, had our kindergarten and first grade general music concerts, which were in person, and the kids did an amazing job. It was so awesome to see them performing up on the stage, and they were just beaming with excitement and joy. So many families, especially at the kindergarten and first grade level, that have never even set foot in Fairview, didn't even know what our auditorium looked like. So it was a really special morning. We were so proud of the students for all their hard work, and Mr. Alex Clift, our music teacher, gets all the credit in the world because he really pulled together, coordinating all the songs, all the music, all of the details. So it was just really great success for both of those concerts. And then tomorrow night, and here, we're really looking forward to kindergarten and parent orientation for all of our new incoming families. So we have about 32 students registered now. We have about 22 families that are coming tomorrow night. Hopefully, we get a little bit more that trickle in tonight and into tomorrow. And then, really exciting, our fourth graders are looking forward to Celebrate America, which has been a huge tradition here at Fairview for many, many years. So we're able to bring it back. It's actually going to be my first one that I'm able to attend because COVID, we weren't able to do it the past two years. So the students were presenting those projects today to their classmates, and then they're really excited to have that tomorrow night in the main gym from 6:45 to 7:30. So, all great things.
Thank you.
We have good news from our Wellness and Insurance Committee. Every year, the big thing that we do is the Wellness and Insurance, our screening for our employees. And why it's a big deal is because if we hit a certain 50% threshold, we get a premium payback from our insurance company. What we, that goes toward is reinvesting in our wellness programs here at school. And that's been a pretty big deal over the last, is it's grown over the last six or seven years. This was the seventh straight year we hit the 50% threshold. This year, we had 71% of eligible employees that participated, which is fantastic, which, again, that money's going to get reinvested back into our programs for next year with our employee wellness. And everyone that participated got one of these shirts modeling it for you guys right now. We do have these for the board too, so make sure you don't leave without one. And then, the, the nice thing about this, when we look at the bigger picture, there's 120 school districts in our insurance cooperative, and only about 30 to 35% of districts hit that 50% threshold. So it's nice to be among that group. So thank you to the employees that participated, and thank you to our committee for putting the event on.
Excellent news, thank you. Anyone else?
No? I have just one thing to share with the board and the audience. Today, I received an invitation to a graduation ceremony at West Point. And I also received a letter, "Dear Dr. Whitaker, our son, Simon Lee, graduated from Fairview in 2014. He will be commissioned as a U.S. Army Second Lieutenant upon graduating West Point, United States Military Academy, on the 21st of May, 2022. He is majoring in mechanical engineering. He is branched in the armor. Thank you for your help and encouragement while our son, Simon Lee, was attending Fairview Elementary School. Best regards, Sylvia and Henry Lee." And I'll pass around his photo, but this is something that every teacher, every staff member should feel so incredibly proud. This is what Fairview is all about, preparing our students to be wonderful young people beyond Fairview. So I just wanted to share that because it's really good news for all of us. And it's just one of those indicators that our students go on, and they are successful in life, which is ultimately all of our goal. So I'll pass, pass the photo around, but that was my good news.
The other thing that struck me, Cindy actually just mentioned that to me before the meeting, she said that she had it. They told us that family hasn't set foot in the school for nearly 10 years, and yet they wanted to come back to Fairview to make sure that we knew what had happened in their life. They, I mean, I don't know if they went to the high school as well, but it, it meant enough to them, Fairview meant enough to them, that they wanted to come back and tell us. And it was a wonderful boost for all the staff here, as you said. But it's, it just shows you the Fairview effect is that once a Fairview Falcon, always a Fairview Falcon, it stays with you. So thank you for sharing that.
Just to echo what you were saying about Fairview's not just a place where they come in to get, you know, go through K through eight. From what I've heard from kids that have graduated from Fairview and at Niles West, they say Fairview is like being home. And when you go to Niles West, it's great, great opportunities, you meet new people, but Fairview is like being at home. And that, you know, I think that's part of the, the value we bring, like, our kids are so content and happy and small and also well-educated.
It means a lot to them. It made me smile when you talked about, Colleen, when you talked about the Celebrate America project. I've still got two of those in my basement, and my kids will not let me get rid of them. And they're in their twenties, for heaven's sake. So, some lasting effects are more valuable than others, but one of these days. Okay, thank you. So, moving along, our first presentation this evening is from Frederick Quinn and our update on the construction.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Jack Hayes. Jack is prepared to provide you an update as to where we are in our process. We had a very lengthy bid opening yesterday afternoon. Had to keep my attention span for almost two hours, and that's not easy. But Jack is going to update the board on where things stand and what our next steps are. So, thank you, Jack.
Yep, thanks for having me. As mentioned, we did have our bid opening yesterday. Over the, since the slide was last here, we've been working with Archon to develop the bid packages and the scopes and the schedule and so forth, to put the package out on the street to interested bidders, and pursuing bidders to make sure that we got good coverage on the project. So we, we did go out for bid, we did receive bids yesterday afternoon for 24 bid packages, which is most of the project, but we did defer four bid packages because the work is so late in the schedule, and it involves scopes such as landscaping, parking lots, fencing, that we don't need until the end of the project, that asking bidders for pricing today for work that's not going to be done for a year is not really in anybody's best interest because they would inflate the prices to a point where it wouldn't be to your advantage, or put themselves at risk as well, which isn't fair from that standpoint. So we did go, we did open bids on 24 bid packages, ranging with, for everything from demolition all the way through painting of the, of the new facilities. We received 99 bids, which is pretty good coverage. That's more than just over four bids per package over the average. Some, of course, had higher than that, and we did have a few where we only had one bid. And some of that is a little bit to be expected on, on specific items like window treatments or caulking, they get very specialized. But one package in, in particular, which is earthwork and grading and excavation, we only got one earthwork package. And it was over budget. Overall, the bids were accounting for some contingencies and allowances and alternates that we've kind of factored into the makeup of it. Were around three and a half to 4% over our previous budget. So now, the hard work comes, is to factor in how do we look at those bids and do some value engineering, and potentially rebidding such as things like earthwork, where it's, it's just not viable the way the bid was submitted right now. To have one bid and have it over budget, we don't feel good coming to you and making a recommendation to award without further vetting out that, that bid package. So we're working with the engineers right now to do that, and the design team to make sure that we can repackage that. We've already identified in that package some schedule and sequencing things that will benefit the district. Because one of the variables in that package is trucking, and I don't know if you're all aware of what's happening with regard to trucking. There's a shortage of trucking, it's become very expensive, and diesel prices have skyrocketed. So it's a variable that we need to rethink and resequence maybe some work, so there's not as much haul off and import to your site for stone and dirt, and that's what we're doing. So we're going to go through that process and come back to you with those packages that we are confident and comfortable with awarding in the next package, and then we may have to then go recommend that we go back out for bid for one or two of these packages. So we're a little bit over budget, but we're, we've got kind of a strategy based on what we heard yesterday to come back with, to you with, and to try to minimize that to the greatest extent possible. Questions?
Yeah, about the, you, you said you had just the one bid for the earthwork.
Yep.
Presumably, that's something that happens pretty early on as well. I mean, having only one bid for, for painting or window treatments would be okay, right? Because you're not going to need that for another year anyway, but something like the earthwork, that's like job one.
Close. There's a few things that come in front of that. We have to do a fair amount and a significant, actually, a significant amount of site utility work
Yeah.
to reroute water, storm, and sanitary sewers.
Yeah, I remember that now.
And then demolition of the east, the library addition.
Okay.
The library wing. And, and those activities all kind of preface or come before actual earthwork. And a fair amount of the earthwork is actually tied to the work for the parking lot in the storm detention and everything over here on the west side. So that's what we're looking at and rethinking how that's going to go. So we do have the time to rebid earthwork from a scheduling standpoint. So it, it does work out.
When you said earthwork, I thought it was more related to that redirection of sewage and so on. I thought it was related to that. And that, as you said, that's job number one, but
Yep, that, that's where we started.
That is not job number one.
That package to came out. We had a good coverage and good competitive bids there.
Good.
So bear with us, we're working on it, and we'll continue to keep you updated.
How long, what, what is the timeline for getting bids to us? Have we got several weeks more to, to wait, or days, or?
Well, we actually would like to come back to your board meeting next Wednesday
Yeah.
just a few, like demolition and site utilities
Yeah.
to get started. And then, at the board meeting on the 18th, we'd like to come back with kind of the next critical set
The rest.
of packages. And then, and it, at the board meeting on the 18th, then we can give more of a comprehensive plan as to a couple of the packages we might want to go out for rebid and what that schedule would look like.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions? Well, thank you for, for doing that, and we'll see you when you've got something for us to approve.
All right, very good, thank you.
Great, thanks very much for your report. Okay, so next on my list is something I'm very glad to see back on the agenda, because it's actually been missing for a couple of years because of COVID, but our parent mentor program presentation, I believe we have some of the graduates from our most recent parent mentor program, which obviously had to take a two-year hiatus, and we're really, really glad to, to see you guys back.
Yeah, so I've asked Colleen to give a brief introduction, just a reminder of what the program is all about. Colleen was gracious enough to oversee this program for administrative team. You know, we often have to sort of delegate different programs to different administrators so that we're able to give it, you know, the attention that it deserves. So Colleen has shepherded this program along, and she's going to introduce the parent mentors to the board.
Hi, everyone. You've heard me talk a little bit about the program over the past couple of years, but like Mary Ann said, we're really excited to be able to have had it back this year. The program allows for a unique opportunity for parents in our community who have not grown up in America to learn about what school is like here in Skokie for their children and for their families. So throughout this program, parents in our community become familiar with what goes on in the walls of Fairview, how our teachers teach each day, the curriculum that's used, classroom management tools, how teachers interact with children, and really how our school operates. It breaks down barriers between parents who were not once comfortable with entering their child's school building, and allows for relationships to grow and foster between parents and our community and our school. So, without further ado, I do have some amazing parents who are seated right behind me. We had four parents volunteer this year to be part of this program, and tonight we have two of them with us. Mrs. Ella Aslani was with Mrs. Rachel Aronin up in middle school this year. They're standing behind me. Just wave when your name is called. Mrs. Julie Pack, she was with Mrs. Bernadette Gonzalez, so. We also have Natalie Shumun that's here with us tonight, Natalie. She oversaw, she was our parent mentor program coordinator this year, so she, what she did is she works with all of our parents who are working in classrooms each week with our teachers, and she's in charge of all of the coordination of that and what that looks like here at Fairview, and helps them to maintain, making sure that they're getting all their hours in. So it's a big job, and it's hard to coordinate many different people's schedules, so we're grateful to her for taking on that role this year. And then we also this evening have with us Mrs. Alex Garcia, so Alex. She oversees the entire parent mentor program through the EL Parent Center. So we're grateful to each and every one of these ladies for all of their hard work, and I think they each have something prepared tonight to share with you a little bit about their experience here at Fairview this year.
Hello, my name is Julie. Hello, my name is Julie.
If you speak quite close like this, we can hear you much better. You, no, you just need to be close to the microphone, that's all. Thank you. Much better.
Okay. My experience of, of parents mentor program was very positive. Personally, I can, I, we, our family moved to this 72 district just right before pandemic. So my son Noah, he didn't have enough time to meet any friends. So after he started school, he spent a little bit of hard time. So I just want to do something for him, and I founded this program. And also, I came to the United, United States when I was 30, so I don't, didn't know about anything but school or system, so I really want to know. So that's the two main reasons I joined this program. Now, I'm very glad that I joined this program because it was a great opportunity to see the school and system and meet other teachers and yeah, and students too. So, I think it, it is really great opportunity for me. And my son Noah is much happier now, and he built up more confidence after I joined this program. And I learned a lot of things from my teacher, Mrs. Gonzalez. I realized that our teachers are really doing lots of, lots of work, so I really respect about it. And so I highly recommend this program to other parents if, if you can join, because I really enjoy this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ella Aslani. I'm a mother of two children at Fairview, kindergartner and a third grader. I'm one of those helicopter parents that wasn't comfortable with the kids starting school, and I tried to find ways to learn more about the school system. That was my main reason for joining the program. I have to say that I learned about it from a parent, and I just didn't have a clue about, you know, what, what is it? And I was surprised that, and I was surprised actually that it had more than just the participation in the classroom. So for me, all the elements that were in the program mattered. It was somehow transformational, because after being a stay-at-home mom for eight years, I finally got to explore other areas and what can I say, I had a unique classroom experience here. I worked in the reading intervention class with Mrs. Aronin. So it was a class of special needs, basically. I have to say that, as I was aware of some strategies and tools you need, and you have to be prepared to work with these kids, I feel like patience is like the most important thing. And I was really blessed to work with Mrs. Rachel and witness her patience. I don't know, what else? I have, I have so much to share. I just stress over the fact that many parents that are in the community could benefit from this program, and many of them can't really participate in the classroom. And I would like to see more innovation. I would like to see maybe parents being exposed to the webinars that we participated in, even if they cannot come to school and be part of classes. So as I said at the beginning, there's the classroom participation, but we also had a support group where we were exposed to cultural exchange, and we also had some trainings and opportunity to be exposed to different speakers with different topics. And we also had webinars where we basically got prepared to be in the classroom. I'm blessed I did it. And it helped me, actually motivated me to get my teacher license substitute, and also gave me like a push to go on and pursue a master's degree.
Wow.
Hi, everyone. My name is Natalie. Natalie, I am a mother of two kids, Isaac and Miral. Shumun, and this for a year too. I was the coordinator.
Can you speak a little closer? That'd be great, thank you.
I was the coordinator of the Fairview for this year. And before I participated in this program, parents mentor, I was a parents mentor. So, and this year, it's kind of different. It's, as a whole program, it's more developed, it's better. But first of all, let me to say I would like to thank you, the Dr. Whitaker and Ms. Larkin, and Mr. Lapecca too, to let us, to let us join with all of you today in the board meeting. And and about this program, about this program, it's, it was good opportunity for all of us. Since I was a teacher in my back home for three years, I was teaching two different levels, fourth and fifth grade. Then I participate in many, and afterward, in my country, so I participate in many villages of my north, north Iraq and my country. So when they told me about this program, and the first time, they, I tell them, oh, this, this opportunity, it's like close to my job, it's, I like it to work. And absolutely, I'm not thinking about anything, just I was a participant in this program. But in the first time, at three years, I working with many teachers, actually, seven teachers I working with, because in each year, I was working with the two teachers. And one year of this three years, I working with the three teachers. Yeah, and I participated, participate with all teachers to help with the student with many things in the school. But for this year, I was participate as the coordinator. And all of the parents mentor here, it's working as a volunteering in each one. It's working in the class in more than 100 hours, in each one of them. Yeah. So I think it's a good opportunity to all of us to, to be close from school, to know the system of school here. Because as I know, when I comparing between here and my country, it's completely different. It's not same at all. Yeah. So all, all of the parents, they have this opportunity to join in this program to see how's the system is going here, how's the process is going here, to know exactly how's, how's the good way to teaching their kids in the school, how's, they can help them in his homework, in each kid. So I think it was the good opportunity for all of us to know exactly what's the schools going on, how's working with, and help us as a parents, and help, help the teachers too, and the schools too. And absolutely, I thank you for the Mr. Lapecca and Ms. Larkin to help us to the success this as a whole team worker. So thank you for all of us.
Thank you.
I'm Alex Garcia and I try to make it super quick. So this is a stayaway program that the whole goal is to do parent engagement. So I want to thank all the board members for pushing this through. It's very important for our community. Our whole goal is to recruit immigrant parents that they have so much to learn about the skills, the school system. But we have many goals in mind. So some of them are to develop their confidence skills, some of them are need to go back to work. So we help them and support them with training to find what is what they're looking for. A lot of our parents are looking to work into the schools because of the hours, so because they really have a passion for education. So we work with them to make sure that they get whatever is the professional, transfer the credits from at home or get a, go back to school or get a substitute license because many of our parents now are working back in the school. So that's, that's huge. Another goal is to really build a connection between the community, the school community and the parents. As an immigrant parent, sometimes we feel very intimidated to come into the schools. We don't know, it's very different back home. So it is very powerful for us to gain that confidence that we know the school and us are working together for the benefit of the community and our children. And the last thing is it really is very important for the children to see people inside the school in a position of power that looks like them, talks like them, and it represents them. I think that's very powerful for the kids. And I've been doing this for nine years and I still amazed every time that I meet the new group of parents because we have so much to learn. We have different minorities in the Skokie, but everybody's kind of isolated. And when we have this program, everybody learns from each other and we learn that we have the same goals. And it's a very powerful opportunity for the parents in the community. Thank you for doing this and supporting the parents.
Thank you, ladies. I just want to say I'm so proud of each of you. For Alex and Mrs. Shimon who graduated the program and our moms who stood up tonight, it's very hard to stand up in front of a group like this in a very formal setting. So I can see that confidence, which is so important. I even heard that one of you were thinking you maybe would never leave Fairview. And I'd say, great. We have hired many of our parent mentor graduates to work back in the building or we've helped them find work in other Skokie schools because we're very committed to growing our workforce through this program. So I hope that you'll keep coming back, not just as parents, but as assistants in our classrooms or other parts of our school buildings. So don't be shy, even though the program's over and you're graduated. We want to keep in touch with you in this capacity as well as in your role as Fairview parents. So I couldn't be more proud of all of you. Congratulations.
I just wanted to add my congratulations too, on behalf of the board. I mean, you know, I, I've missed hearing from, from our graduates for the last two years. I mean, this is just such a win, 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 win situation that, that everybody benefits, the school benefits, and most importantly, the students benefit and the parents benefit. And just, just all the things you mentioned, the fact that they, they see people that they, they recognize as being from their own culture or other cultures and it just, I love it. It's great. Thank you very much for coming this evening. Don't feel obliged to stay for the rest of the boring stuff, but we're really, really glad you were able to come this evening and share that with us. Thank you very much. Superintendent report.
Sure. I will hit a few highlights like I do every month. I'm very happy to report that our facility project has officially passed all of the village commissions. Last week, we passed through the village board, which was sort of the final step. So I think Jeff and I are both happy to have village commissions behind us on this project. But they have been just very complimentary of the project and very proud that we're trying to improve our little corner of the Skokie community. These relationships, you know, with the village and other agencies really come in handy, especially when I heard that they were resurfacing Laramie Avenue this summer, which is not going to be a great idea because of all of our construction traffic. And so it was nice to be able to reach out to the village and kind of state my case as to why maybe they should think about doing it in another year and they have agreed to do so. But it's just, again, all about those partnerships and relationships that we have in the community that come in hand. #OneFairview, I wanted to let you know that we are working with a local artist to design a special graphic representation of what #OneFairview is going to mean. And so that is in progress, but we're really excited. It's almost done. We will also be sending the district equity leadership team, the Delt, which you've heard much about, will be meeting with our consultant, Dr. Dubiel, for a full day on this coming Friday. And the goal of that work to, will be to develop our equity implementation plan. So it will be a, a concrete representation of the goals that we will be working towards over the next year and then beyond. So we'll be hopefully bringing that to the board in, in May or June at the latest. But you know, more exciting work going on there. Let's see. Had a couple of meetings with Nick Connor, our union president, about the amended calendar that you'll be hearing about later today. We've also had discussions about the legislation regarding COVID sick leave and how we're going to manage that for this past year with our employees who did have to take time off due to COVID, either illness themselves or having to be home with, with school age children who were either quarantined or diagnosed with COVID. So a lot of details to work through there, but I think we're definitely on the right track. We are prepping because we do believe we're going to see refugees coming in from the Ukraine. We do have Ukrainian families in the community and we do know that we have worked with Refugee One previously, when there was an influx of refugees to Chicagoland area. So we're kind of preparing for that. And, and you know, learning a lot about their culture and what their needs might be when they do arrive to school. And then, you know, the other big piece this month was what you've already heard about in terms of the bidding process. You know, a little disappointing to have the cost be a little bit more than we thought. I'm not surprised by that because of what's going on in the world and the market right now. So we were expecting a little bit of that, but I think we have some really good brainstorming going on as to how to kind of work through that and, and get back to where we need to be. So that are just a couple of the highlights from the report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that board members might have.
When you are planning the, the preparation for the refugees that, you know, you think might, that we might encounter, please let the board know if there's anything that we can do to approve or to, you know, financially, whatever it is that you think that we need, let us know. I think, I think many of us would be very happy to.
Thank you. Yeah, we have such an amazing community. I know when we put out an ask, you know, everybody just jumps right in. And so we're not hesitant to do that. Many of these students could qualify as homeless because they are refugees. So there are funds set aside within the district budget for homeless students. Currently, we have zero homeless students, but we always have that money set aside for the time and place when we need it. So that's probably where we'd go to first. And it could be basic needs, you know, clothing, shoes, things for a house. But you know, we'll just have to see everywhere up to school supplies, backpacks, those types of things. So, but yes, we absolutely will. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Thanks very much. Excellent report. So now we're moving into our board committees and representatives. And the first one on my list is finance personnel committee. So.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the finance and personnel committee met last week, Thursday, I believe, and we discussed the educational support staff compensation, which will be coming up later in the agenda. And we also discussed an update on the facility project financing and then the amended budget that has to go along with the project financing that we will be discussing towards the end of the meeting. Sorry, is there anything I missed?
Nope.
Short and sweet. Thank you. On EdRed, I I have a report on my phone. Okay. So first of all, this last Monday was the EdRed legislation dinner. They had actually postponed it. It's usually in January, but they had it in, in May, April, because it was their 50th. And of course, January was right in the middle of the, the rising and the pandemic, the, the new variant. So they postponed it. So Dr. Carmen Ayala, who's the state superintendent of education, she came and spoke. And there was also a panel afterwards. And the main theme of Dr. Ayala's talk and also the panel was about social emotional learning, being that this is the challenge that we have in order to help our students get past COVID and where they need to be. I unfortunately missed the April 14th meeting of EdRed, but I was given an update. Cindy almost already mentioned the Administrative Leave and Paycheck Protection Act that was passed, which is protecting, no, that's not the right one. So I'm sorry, the, the one concerning reimbursement of time for COVID, that, that was actually passed by the governor. The budget has been passed by the governor, including 350 million extra to evidence-based funding. So extra funding there, also extra funding in, in special education and transportation. The, there was a excuse me a minute. Yeah, there is a bill out there at the moment, which will be affecting Fairview, which is HB 3296. And that's one I've also been thinking about in, in my position, my, my day job. And that's actually about a career advisement for students between age, grade six and 12. So obviously the middle school students here would be affected by that. And that is that there needs to be at least one career advisement for students by 2027. When I say career advisement, it's actually one program for career advisement. So that's coming into play, but there's some opt out options on that. So we're, we're not quite sure how that's actually going to play when it actually comes into being. But the other one that they talked about was the Senate Bill 3900, which is the Right to Read Act. That also would affect Fairview because that would require all teachers of reading to be trained in evidence-based reading training. I think that wouldn't necessarily be a challenge for Fairview. I think we're quite confident that our teachers are adequately trained, but they're concerned about there being certain areas where teachers are not formally trained or not sufficiently trained in evidence funding, evidence-based training. The other things that are, that were talked about are relating to educators. Basically, there was some changes in teachers evaluations and the licensing renewal, needing fewer professional development hours, reducing of the fees for renewing your licenses or restarting your license. And this is all with a view to helping the teacher shortage situation because any way that they can get teachers back into the classroom, either returning to the classroom or signing up to be in the classroom, the better because there is this shortage statewide. Not so much here, but statewide. So that's quite a lot going on with EdRed right now. Obviously, session will be closing next month. And so by the time I speak to you next month, it will be a little bit more finalized as to what's actually happening for the year. So.
Mary Ann, there's a couple, two other, two other points that actually affect the, that were on EdRed that actually affect us. It's, there's Senate Bill, we had a couple of finance committee meetings, subcommittee meetings since, and I was at the EdRed regular meeting. So Senate Bill 1975, this is a bill that is going to affect us with regards to levy. What happens is that if we under levy in one year, you now have the flexibility to go back in the future and recapture the under levy that you did the previous year. Don't want to get into the mechanics of it now, but if it comes to affect us, I'll let you know. The second one is we had a, it was essentially a strategy session because as we look at it right now, tax bills for the fall are going to be delayed until after the new year. What that means for us is, is not that much right now because we are able to, with our reserves and our cash flow, we're going to be able to stabilize and be fine until the new year. But it means a couple of things for our taxpayers. One is that, that fall tax bill is going to bump up against the spring tax bill as far as due dates. The second part of that is a number of districts are going to have to issue tax anticipation warrants. Districts that don't have the fund balance that we do are going to be in some financial hardship. So as a committee, we are trying to strategize how we want to handle that from a legislative standpoint or lobbying standpoint and let the assessor know who's trying, he, the assessor essentially, when he took over two to three years ago, is trying to change a lot of things and how, and, and right a lot of wrongs. However, it's getting, it's getting caught up in a lot of bureaucracy and it's, it, there's some troubles with trying to get things put the right way. So there's a lot, the huge delay and it's going to affect a number of school districts. So they're trying to strategize right now how to help those districts and how to not have this delay in tax bills affect them. So that was another huge thing that we talked about at, at the EdRed level, but there's a lot going on.
Yeah, I was familiar with the whole levy thing that they've mentioned that less so in this last meeting apparently, but, but I didn't know about the delayed tax bill. Nobody mentioned that. That's really interesting.
And it's a big deal. You don't appreciate the fund balance until something like that happens. And in this state, sadly, it happens more than it should. But because we have fund balance, we don't have to be, you know, stressed about it. We don't have to put out the warrants. It's, it's another reason why, you know, when the community asks why we have fund balance, this is a reason why, because we can operate even if the state doesn't come through.
Yeah, and that obviously, if you're talking about the property tax money, that is what, 90% of our income? Yeah. So if we don't get 90% of our income for six months, what, what are you going to live on, basically? Yeah, that's where you need a fund balance. Okay. Well, thank you for that extra update. NTGSE.
Yeah. Board member Downing is absent this evening. And I also believe we did not have a representative at the last meeting, just with different scheduling conflicts and whatnot. So there is no report this evening.
Okay. Hopefully we'll get a couple next time. And PTA liaison, that would.
I just wanted to add to, Steve was here and gave the report, but just how much work has been going into the cultural night coming up next week and this week's teacher appreciation luncheon. And then there was talks about having in-person end of year parties for the K through four. So that's exciting. Getting back to normal-ish.
Excellent. Great. Thank you. The only other thing I wanted to mention was to thank Erin for coming with me to the IASB dinner that was this last week. It's been dinners, dinners, dinners for me. And it was at Lincoln Junior High School, the, the brand new high school. Actually just across the road from my house. It's, it's actually closest to me than Fairview is. And the speaker there was Ralph Martieri, who was talking about state funding situation. He's always entertaining. If you ever get to hear Ralph Martieri, I highly recommend him because very understandable, lots and lots of data, but very, very understandable and very entertaining. So thanks for coming with me. And thanks for giving me a ride because it was pouring with rain. So moving on, freedom of information requests. I can report that there were no freedom of information requests this month. Information items and correspondence. Mr. Secretary, do we have anything?
The board did not receive any correspondence this month.
Okay. Moving along. Now we come to public comments. So I can invite members of the audience to address the board and remind them to state their names. And we will have a three-minute time limit and the secretary will keep time. Is there anybody that wishes to address the board?
Hello. Good evening. With love. So we heard some great things tonight related to school rankings.
Sorry, could you state your name?
Yes, my name is Rafael Cavour and I have a sixth grader and a third grader at Fairview.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we heard some wonderful things related to our school. Obviously this, you know, school rankings, the fund balances that you were just talking about. And I think all of our parents were very proud of our Fairview community and the school that the district will represent. But I do come here tonight a bit disappointed as a parent, concerned and annoyed as a neighbor. And I wanted to get mine and my parent and some of the other parents' feelings on the record. So first, I am disappointed at the initial reaction. So first, I am disappointed at the initial reaction that our school administration and the PTA had to a situation related to the upcoming Teacher Appreciation Lunch. As many of you may or may not know, one of our wonderful parents, Antonia, she begun planning an extremely thoughtful and caring event to celebrate our teachers for the upcoming Teacher Institute Day. And with it being a celebration and being that Cinco de Mayo was just around the corner, you know, she had an awesome idea of making it Fiesta theme. Thought it was great. She reached out to the district, reached out to the PTA for approval, got their approval. Then she was, you know, excited. She begun planning, you know, put together taco trucks, churros, piñatas, sombreros, serapes. So she thought of it all. And, you know, months of really envisioning her her vision and planning and arranging and making sure the event would be a success. It was kind of shattered this past weekend when, you know, minority consensus and a woke ideology that goes around in this district called in complaining about how somehow this is, you know, culturally insensitive and inappropriate. And my concern is that it was, you know, met with no resistance, but kind of acceptance and without really any open discourse. You know, Antonia wasn't able to, you know, this person wasn't able to talk to Antonia about their feelings. So, you know, that theme, that vision, that, you know, hard work that she put into it was kind of canceled and hurt, you know, as far as she just thought. We know that the appreciation lunch is still happening, but not in how she had envisioned, and she's the one that put the work into it. And the person who, you know, called in, who knows, because they're remaining anonymous, if they could care less about it, you know, that if the teachers deserve the celebration or not. Now, I believe that we, as a school district, can allow ourselves to be controlled by a small mob of activists who don't express the majority views of parents, parents of all backgrounds. So many Latino parents in the community, myself included, were baffled when we heard all this news. Second, I'm concerned, because I see this woke ideology and, you know, in our communities, in our country, and their agenda is totally counterintuitive to their so-called goals of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And their motives, to me, are just simply evil. And, you know, we can't just be silent about all of this.
Can you finish your comment, please?
Yes, ma'am. Lastly, I'm annoyed that this person, a neighbor of ours, you know, called into the school, said that he or she wishes to remain anonymous. And I think that shows a lot of lack of disrespect and cowardice, and it speaks volume to her or his ability to not be able to defend his or her argument. So and the irony of all of this is that on Monday, our kids were served Fiesta bowls for lunch.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. Is there anyone else wishes to address the board? Nope, we're good. Okie dokie. So we'll move on to our action items for this evening. The first one I have on my list is to adopt a resolution reaffirming the transportation hazardous areas. Do we have a comment on that? Yes, can I have a motion and a second?
A motion?
Sorry.
A second.
Okay, so.
This is a resolution that the district considers annually, and the hazardous intersection is the fact that Tui splits the district, and we also have the Edens Expressway with the off-and-on ramps that create a situation that's unsafe for children. So annually, we ask that the board continue to pass this resolution, which allows us to continue to provide transportation for students who cannot safely walk or bike to school. We've been passing this resolution for a long time. Tui's not going to change. We'll probably do it for a long time to come.
Every year. Okay, anybody got any questions about it? Okay. In that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The resolution is adopted. The next one we have here is to adopt part-time teacher contracts for 2022 and 2023. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Our second. We already discussed this in closed session, so could the secretary please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Diakakis. I vote yes. Ms. Lenoir?
Yes.
Mr. Gulliana?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown?
Yes. The contracts are approved. Next item is to approve the educational support personnel salaries for 2022, 2023. This also was discussed in closed session. So could the sec, oh, no, I need a motion and a second, first of all.
So moved.
Got that.
And I'll second.
Okay, and could the secretary please call the roll vote?
Yes, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gulliana?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoir?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Diakakis?
Okay. Thank you to our support personnel salary. We are rewarding you with a raise. So next, to approve the amended 2022, 2023 calendar. Can I have a motion and a second? Our motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this one?
I think that the memo was fairly clear.
Yep.
Legislation was passed to add Election Day as a legal school holiday, so we needed to add that to our calendar. I was waiting to take this action until we could see whether or not additional days might be needed due to our construction project to either start school a little later or end a little sooner. Doesn't look like that's going to be an issue, which is why I'm bringing the calendar at this time. I will note, though, in looking at the calendar and having discussions with the union, we have moved the observance of Veterans Day to Monday, November 7. It had previously been put on Friday, November 4. And we moved it on to Monday, so that would be a day off. And then Tuesday, Election Day would be a day off as well. We know our Fairview families appreciate those longer weekends if they get a chance to escape Skokie, and we know our staff does as well. So that seemed to make a lot of sense. With Veterans Day, we do have the ability to observe that holiday, you know, close to the holiday. And we also do things within the school building to teach the children about the holiday. But and we'll certainly continue that. But so those are the two changes. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but like I said, I did discuss this with the union, the calendar committee. They felt comfortable with it as well, so.
So Veterans Day would actually be on the Friday, correct? The 11th?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. But just saves chopping up a week, because they'd be in a day, out in two days.
I am always a strong proponent of keeping school weeks intact as much as possible. Full school weeks are fantastic for us. When we have a day off midweek and, you know, just we lose some of our momentum. So as much as possible, if we can keep our weeks solid, that is helpful to all of us.
This could even be a permanent thing, because the election day is always going to be on a Tuesday. So you've always got this second day into the week, day off. We'll see. Okay, does anybody have any questions about the calendar? Okay, in that case, all those in favor of approving the calendar as presented, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Calendar is approved. Now the more complicated ones. So can I have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution authorizing the transfers to debt service?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Fair?
I'll do my best. In the board packet, there was a summary on the facility project financing. And that essentially broke down everything that's happened up to this point with regard to the financing. So the monies that we, we have received the monies from our bond issues, that's in our accounts currently, which is about $15 million. There's a breakdown there in that page of how the project is being funded. This debt service transfer is for one of those items. We issued $5 million in debt certificates. What we did when we issued those was we pledged our own money from our own finance, from our own current finances, to pay those debt certificates off. How we're going to do that is a transfer from our operations and maintenance fund into our debt service fund for those payments every year. What the resolution we're adopting tonight is going to allow us to basically approve it tonight, and then every subsequent year of the debt certificate payoff, we wouldn't have to adopt a resolution. This resolution is good as long as we budget that money in our approved budget every year. And there's already a schedule attached. The schedule is in the board pa, is in the packet as well for the amounts. This year, it's about $49,000. So we'll be transferring that that money into the debt service fund to make that payment. There are other transfers that will go along with these, this process, and that's broken down in your board packet as well. But based on what we know right now, the next transfer that we'll have to make for payment for these projects won't be until next fiscal year, because currently we have enough money to make our other payment. June 1, 2022 is when our next payment for these bonds is due. So tonight, you're just approving a transfer from our operations and maintenance to our debt service fund, which is already pledged when we issue the debt certificates.
So just make sure I'm hearing you correctly. We're authorizing these transfers over to the debt service fund as needed throughout the the life of the debt service.
Through the light, life of the debt certificates, which is until 2036, so 15 years.
2030, I don't think I'll be here in 2036.
I refuse to comment on that.
Very diplomatic. Okay, so basically, this is a one-time authorization for you to to pay our bill.
It is. And and there's a more, the the other transfer that we're going to have to do in the fall is more complicated. We'll have to do it every year. But this one is, we'll just have to do it once.
Okay, anybody got any other questions? We're good? Okay, did we get the motion second? We did. Okay, in that case, can the secretary please call the roll vote?
Yes, Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Lenoir?
Yes.
Mr. Gulliana?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown?
Yes. Okie dokie. And finally, can I have a motion in the second to place an amended budget on public display and to set a date of public hearing of June 15, 2022, for reviewing the budget?
So moved.
Our second. Over to you again.
There, there's a memo in the board packet about the amended budget with all the changes that I'm recommending. Basically, this is what we had talked about when the final budget was adopted in September. I didn't feel it was the right thing to do or the transparent thing to do to put items in the budget that weren't approved by the board yet. We knew that the construction project was potentially coming down the pipeline, and it could have been budgeted at that point, but I didn't think that was the appropriate thing to do until we had board approval. This, it was also discussed with our auditor to make sure that was the recommended way, because really, amending the budget is a mechanism we don't typically use. Some districts will use it to alter their budget numbers during the year, things that came in high. Our mentality has always been, if something comes in over budget or under budget, as long as we have an explanation for that, and we're able to explain that to the board, that should be enough. With this, this was, these were large items that, because they weren't approved by the board yet, we didn't want to budget for. So right now, there's a list of items in your board packet that li, that outlines exactly what we'll be doing when we submit the amended budget, most of them being the proceeds from the bonds being deposited, the transfers between funds, and then also expenditures from our capital projects fund for the projects that were, or for the items that we're currently spending on for architectural services and also for early construction. You'll notice in there that rather large amounts for the capital projects, because we don't have a, we don't have a rough, and we don't have an amount yet, as how much is going to be spent in the June period. So we wanted to put placeholders in there. So I don't know if there's any questions, or if you had a time to look at those, but it's pretty straightforward as far as what we're doing. It's exactly what we talked about in September, but now we have numbers attached to it.
So this is amending this year's budget FY '22, so.
Right, and we're actually, and we're not approving it right now. We're putting it on display. So like, like the difference with the tentative in the final budget, we have to have 30, on display for at least 30 days.
Yeah.
So we'll come back and approve this in the June board meeting. The deadline for amending the budget is June 30. So we'll be under that deadline at the June board meeting.
So does this get reported to state as an amended budget?
It does, yes. It's like submitting, it's like submitting the same, it's submitting the same final budget form. It's like one box you have to check that says date of amended budget, and that's where you have to change.
And we get audited on the amended budget that was submitted?
Well, they'll look at both and make sure both are in line.
It all transfers.
And I've had discussions with our auditor to make sure we're doing the, doing it the correct way.
So the real purpose of this is to make this year's budget look kind of more realistic as to what it was, because at the beginning of the year, we weren't, we didn't have any of these building numbers.
It's filling in for more information. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
No other line items will be changed in the budget, no other, nothing else that we budget at the beginning of the year, expenditures that we knew were coming, revenues. Yeah, in fact, we, we just got approved for our SFR3 funds, which was about $1 million. I'm not including that here, because we don't know when we're going to receive those funds exactly. So I also didn't, that was the accurate thing to do, to put those in here, not knowing if we're going to get them.
And it is almost May. We literally have two months of this budget year left.
And those are expenditure-based, so we'll have to submit a report on our end. And once they see that we spent that money, then they'll submit, or they'll process revenue. And about $800,000 of that is going to cover the cost of architectural services. So we've submitted that expenditure report already. It's just a matter of when we're going to get the funds in.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. In that case, could the secretary please call the roll vote?
Yes, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
And Mr. Gulliana?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoir?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead. Post your budget. Thank you very much, Jeff. Appreciate your explanation. I looked at all those numbers and thought, Jeff will take care of this. I got it. Okay, so finally, items for future consideration. Does anybody have anything that they would like to mention? Or consider? Or talk about? Now, I actually do have a few things. You probably saw it in your email, but the IASB conference is opening up for registration in June. The conference will be between the 18th and 20th of November. It's always the weekend before Thanksgiving weekend. And I strongly recommend it. We had a couple of you guys came last year. And I do strongly recommend it. Consider the the trainings that they do on the Fridays. I know it's a little bit more difficult, because it's a workday, but if you are able to to attend, I strongly recommend it. The other thing to mention is the resolutions. You remember, we reviewed those. It's when people are doing the resolutions, and then I went to the conference and voted on them. We're at the stage now where you can actually make those resolutions if you want to. So if anybody did have any burning idea about what they want to see IASB work on legislatively, new laws that they want to see happen, we can submit applications for that until June 22. So if anything occurs to you, please let me know. The other thing that's worth mentioning is that the IASB is is actually formed a new association, a new national association with 21 other states. We used to be part of National Association of School Boards, and there's been a breakaway from them. Now we're part of COSBA, which is Consortium of State School Boards Association. And as I said, there's 22 district, 22 states in that altogether at the moment. That's just begun. So you, it's less important of the day-to-day, but I think it's important to know exactly what we're actually a part of and what the the guiding principles are that are coming down from on a national level to what we're doing on a state level. So the only other reminder is, if you haven't done it already, you must do your statement of economic interest by May the 1st. So I hope you've already done that. And do read it, because it's not the same questions. It's quite radically different from previous years. So that's the only other things that I wanted to mention. And if there's nothing else.
I was just going to ask you, can you just repeat the acronym for the?
Oh, it's Consortium of State School Boards Association. So it's COSBA, C-O-S-S-B-A. If you Google it, you can find out more about it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okie dokie. If we're all done, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting at 8:14 PM?
So moved.
Our second. Can the secretary please call a roll vote?
Yes, Ms. Lenoir?
Yes.
Mr. Gulliana?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your participation this evening, everybody. Appreciate it.